Okay, good morning. We have our city manager here. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 9:03 a.m. Let's see here. So first, what I'd like to do, we are going to, well, greet you all and let you, thank you for being here. We're gathered today to bid farewell to four council members who we have taken great pride in serving alongside them. And I'd like to invite everyone to go ahead and sit down. And at this time, I'd like to invite any council members to make any farewell comments and brief remarks for our four councilmen who are, that we're bidding farewell. Councilman Pusley.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is certainly a meeting which we all have mixed emotions about. And I just want to say, I think in the past two years, this has been one of the better councils that have served here in Corpus Christi in a very long time. We have accomplished a lot. We have moved things forward. We have been able to do many things that we were not able to do in the past. And I just want to say how much I appreciate working with all of you on this council, but especially to our outgoing members of the council. Each of you bring a unique perspective to this council. And we're going to miss those perspectives. But I have all of your cell phone numbers, so don't go far. But I really, truly, and sincerely mean what I'm saying about your unique perspectives and how that has helped move this city forward. So Councilman Molina, Councilman Lerma, Councilman Smith, Councilman Martinez, I have enjoyed serving with you, working with you, and enjoying the great things that we've been able to do for this city. So thank you all very much for your service to this community. And I'm sure that all of you will be around to do other things as well. So God bless each and every one of you and your families, and wishing you all the best in this new year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to make a farewell ribbon? Councilman Barretta?
Well, honestly, I had started to work up something on each one individually, but it seemed my allergies would kick up every time. And so it's, as Councilman Pusley says, with, yeah, mixed emotions. And I tell you what, some of you, well, all of your family, but I can't tell you how much the wisdom, the guidance, the perspective of how much it meant to me, you know. It's, you know, during my campaign, I had said that it's easy to lob spitwads from the bleachers, but all you men were in the fight. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate it. Whether we were with each other or against each other, I know you really cared about the community. So with that, I can't tell you how much I'm going to miss all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hunter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, for two of you, it's been a long ride. We've been here from the beginning with the mayor, and we've accomplished a lot. We've had, seen some tough things, but without y'all's backbone, experience, and knowledge, we could be in a lot worse shape than we are now. And the past two years have been great. Y'all have taken the leadership helm on a lot of different areas, in a lot of different areas that needed it. And I just want to say that I really appreciate everything that you've taught me, all the time you've spent for the city and the citizens. And I think I'm starting to get Roland's allergies. So really appreciate everything that y'all have done for the city. And I hope people will look to your leadership as an example. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hunter. Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you, Alan. I'll keep this short and sweet for once.
For you.
Pull an item from the agenda.
I won't get into the weeds. How's that? No, I want to say thank you. I appreciate it. You know, generally, when you work together with someone for a while, you make friends or you make enemies. In this case, we made friends. And it's, I'm going to miss you guys. You guys are, I consider, friends now, whether we agreed with each other or not. And, you know, we never agree with everybody 100% of the time. So it's, but I appreciate it, and the fact that you guys were in the ring and taking the punches along with the rest of us. I guess sometimes you don't get the perspective of being in the position until you're there. So you guys know what it's like. So we have a common experience. And it's much appreciated for your service to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hernandez. And I did not, my allergies did not get in the way. And though I do have something specific for each of you. So first, to City Councilman at Large, John Martinez, excuse me, I want to thank you for always having thoughtful and wise counsel. The perspective that you have brought to this dais will be greatly missed and is very valued. I will also miss seeing, which you don't have today, but every week, he has a Starbucks cup of coffee on this dais, and know that I'll be thinking of you every time I go to Starbucks. Councilman Billy Lerma, I'd like to thank you for your service first to our country, as a United States Marine and as a longtime school board member. Your tenacity and the representation of your district is forever to be admired. There will probably be no one after you that will religiously call me ma'am, as you do in your military manner. So I will sincerely miss your respectful demeanor, sir. Thank you. To Councilman Ben Molina, who has served for six years, we thank you for your longtime commitment and your continued work on local and nonprofit boards and commissions. I thank you for your service rendered to the public interest. I will miss your tireless efforts to get me to eat more sweets at lunch, or one more serving of enchiladas. He always said, oh, just do it. And I said, no, I can't always. That will be missed. And finally, to City Councilman Greg Smith, who has served alongside me since 2016. I will greatly miss your analytical and your historical knowledge to countless issues that brought extraordinary value to this council, Greg. Councilman Greg Smith is the epitome of the flower bluff graduate. Graduating in 1970 to my 1990, he actually calls me 90, and I call him 70. So I'll miss you 70. But trust that I will continue to count on your wise counsel. And I do expect you to answer my calls, as you are in the midst of pillow fights with your beautiful grandchildren that you will now be able to spend more time with. So on behalf of the people of Corpus Christi, I want to thank the four city council members who have served our community with honor and with pride. This council will never, ever forget you, all of you. It means a lot. And what you have left is a legacy of respect and a legacy that is going to impact lives forever in Corpus Christi. So thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I would like to invite the four council members to join me in the well to give your remarks and to receive some gifts. And after that, we will ask the rest of the council to join us in the well as well for a group picture.
the city, lots of gifts. So this is from the city secretary's office. It's a little swag bag of things. It has your council pad in there with your name on it, just as a memento. So that's one gift that you have. We also have this gift for you as well. Can you, you can put that down for a second. Okay, this one, you'll need, you'll need some scissors to open. Okay, so let's set this down here. And let me let you take care of that. Open that ribbon right here. Just cut.
Christmas always comes.
I know. There you go. All right.
Now watch me drop this one.
No, don't drop that one. Set it open.
There we are. Get through the packing. Where's my grandkids when I need them?
All right. And that's a commemorative plate from Al O'Toole. That's from the city secretary's office. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it has your dates of service on there. Thank you so much for your service. We appreciate it. And this is from Mayor Wajardo.
Thank you. Thank you, 90.
And finally, we have a gift from city manager's office, from city manager Peter Zanoni.
We made sure all the potholes were fixed on that road.
All right, Greg, and would you like to say a few words at this point?
Oh, gosh, a few words, and we're talking to a politician. That's a tough one. Let me look at the clock here. First, I was asked, Greg, what have you accomplished on council? It's been six years with it. What have I accomplished? Well, I appointed a person to the police, the crime control, one to the Capitol Affairs with it. I gained 15 pounds, too much snacking in the back. And I recycled a heck of a lot of paper. That's all that I have accomplished here at the city. Now, we, nosotros, we have accomplished a lot. There's not a single thing, as a single council member, you don't do anything. Everything takes a we with it. And I could go on, like I could fill the next 45 minutes up with it. But this city has definitely moved forward. I want to thank all the great staff. The amount of time we worked together, so much was done. Our fellow council members, as we all know, it's a we. You got to have five. Otherwise, nothing gets done. So it's been a very fun six years on there, Paulette, with it. I've got a special, you know, six years ago we started, or actually, it was 73 months ago. Ben, you know, 16 on there. Michael, Paulette, gosh. Yep, it went like that. We've done so much. There's so much more to do. I have full confidence in going forward, that we've got a lot of great people. You all that are staying, have fun. And one last thing is, you know, we've got a great name, the city of Corpus Christi. Corpus Christi, the body of Christ with it. And the Corpus word on here, that's the body. That's not the flesh and blood. But that's what Christ did, Christi did, in his time. We are a corpus here. The nine of us is a corpus, looking at keeping that in mind, taking care of our bigger corpus, our city with it. So I think that very special name that we have, keeping that in mind, whether it's that body of work, that forgiveness, acceptance, and tolerance that Christi led. So in Christi's name, farewell and good luck.
Thank you so much. That was beautiful. Now, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Ben Molina. So we have same gifts. So here's just, we do want to, I know, we do have a belt, you have a belt buckle in there. No, the city has an official belt buckle, in addition to some other goodies in there.
I need a horse.
Yeah. So that's one gift. And then here is your other one.
This is the, uh?
Yes, commemorative plate. You can, as I was going to say, you guys can just cut it there.
Yeah, I want to drop that.
No.
That's beautiful.
Courtesy of the city secretary's office. It's for you.
Picture real quick, too.
Thank you. And that's from, here's a gift from Mayor Wajardo. Beautiful. It's a paperweight, Mayor? Crystal paperweight. It's very pretty. And then, of course, from city manager Zanoni. We have that awesome street sign. Very cool.
This is not his high school picture either.
Put that on the street corner.
Right.
Thank you.
And Ben, if you'd like to say a few words?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, man, you know, the longer I talk, the longer I get to be a council member, right? So I'm going to keep it really short. Oh, man. Just like Roland, I try to sit down and think about the things that I wanted to say, but I just couldn't do it. There's so much to be said and not enough time, nowhere near enough time. But to my colleagues here, thank you all. Like Greg said, we've been able to accomplish a lot together. I know District Two is that much more better. This city is that much more better because of the work that you all had a hand in. So thank you all for, for being here, for your leadership. I've learned so much from each and every one of you all. And I count each and every one of you all as dear friends. And of course, we can't do this without the people. And this is why we do this. I see Scott Leighton back here, him and Staub's, and your respective associations. Thank you all for your support. Those who have supported me in the past, like the realtors and the builders and the general contractors, thank you all. Ephraim with the chamber, thank you for your friendship. And of course, the most important person in my life, Jennifer, my wife, who has been a rock for me, who has been my sounding board, who has kept me level-headed. And then Peter, you and your staff, I've grown to, to appreciate you all, not just on a professional level, but on a personal level. I've gotten to know you and your family and your city staff and the team here. I appreciate everything that you all do for the city. Our chiefs here, Chief Rocha, congratulations on your retirement. And Chief Markle, thank you for your friendship and your leadership. And like I said, there's so much to be said and not enough time. So thank you all, Corpus Christi, for letting me be a part of this, this mission here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would y'all want to stand up with your banner? That's really nice. Thank you. All right, Mr. Letterman, come on up. Here's your official swag bag, just some things to remember the city for. You're welcome.
It's not a box of stamps, is it?
No, no.
I've got plenty of those, sir.
There's your commemorative plate.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And finally, we have the, your street sign, official street sign from the city manager.
Well, first of all, I want to say Happy New Year to everyone. It's a great beginning of a new year. I want to thank God for once for giving me the opportunity to serve the people of District One. I know that I'm leaving District One in accomplishing quite a few things that we've done for District One. And I say to we, once again, the word we, you know, when you get elected, people think it's an I, I, I. It's never going to be an I. Okay, it's a we. And it's not just we as a council, but it's we as a city staff, you know, also because we have to work together to accomplish anything in this city. You know, I'm thankful for my wife and my family's support. They're my rock. They're my foundation. You know, I want to thank the voters that voted for me these past two years for electing me to this position here. I want to thank the associations, the police association, the firefighters association, home builders, realtors, those that supported me. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve the people in this city. Chief Markle, I'm glad you came back. When you retired during my time, I was concerned there when you retired, you know. Chief Rocha, good luck on your retirement. I don't know, you may come back in a year or two. Who knows? You know, but it's been a blast, you know. To Peter and his staff, it's been an honor, a pleasure, sir, working together to move the city forward. There's a lot of visions that are, that sit up here on this area here. And it's really difficult for you to try to work through nine council members. But you're doing a great job, you and your staff. You know, there's still work to be done. And of course, you know that, you know. I'm not going to let you forget about District One, the North Beach, the La Bonti Park projects. I mean, I'm still going to stay on top of that, you know. I'll still come visit, you know. Rebecca, to you and your staff, thank you so much for all the help that you've given me. You've always had the answers, or you've always looked for the answers when I've asked questions. And it's been a pleasure. You know, I'm going to miss all of you guys. But to this point, I'm going to be more powerful because I'm going to be on this side. I'll be able to step right there for three minutes, okay, when something comes up, you know. I just want to say God bless everybody and God bless this great city of Corpus Christi. Thank you so much.
Last but not least, we have council member at large, John Martinez. So there is your city swag. We want you to wear that belt buckle. I think it's in there, right? Yeah, it's on the side. It's in the back. Let's see. We also have your commemorative plate. One's from the city secretary's office with your dates of service. Mayor Wajardo's paperweight with terms of service as well. And finally, the street sign from city manager. And finally, the street sign from City Manager Peter Zenoni. All right, so, Mr. Martinez.
I do get emotional when I speak, so forgive me in advance. First of all, it's been an honor to serve the people of Corpus Christi, so thank you for giving me that opportunity. You know, council can only be as good as the staff. We're limited by how good we are based on how good the staff is, and we've had the best staff. Peter, thank you for your leadership. As City Manager, I know that, you know, city council gets the credit or the blame for, for what's happening in the city, but really, you're one of the people that really makes things happen and gets things done. I also want to thank Michael Rodriguez. When, when we get appointed, or when we're city council members, we get appointed a liaison with the city manager's office. And so whenever I would get a call for something from a constituent, Michael was the one who assisted me. So anything that I got done for any of the constituents, it was actually Michael that was getting it done. I was just taking the credit. So thank you, Michael. You, you made the job so much easier for me. And that goes for all staff, every department. You know, we've had just top-quality leadership, people working there, and that's why the city is doing as well as it is. It isn't any individual council member. You know, council does a lot, and I've seen that, but, but it's all of us together. Chief, chief, you know, the, the things that we've done with, with fire protection, safety, public safety here in the community, I mean, where we were even two years ago to where we are today is amazing, and you guys are the reason for that. So, there's just so many people to thank and not enough time, but it has been an honor serving. It's been a pleasure serving. I know that I leave city council in good hands. I know we've got some great members coming in, and I know that there's some great members that are staying behind. So, everybody, thank you for, for allowing me this opportunity to serve you, and I'll still be around, so.
Do you want to chair?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Also, I had the privilege to serve as, as the chairman of the municipal court committee, and so, you know, we've, we've come a long way in that two years as well. We've gone through a lot of challenges. Now, another thing with this council is from day one, we were dealing with COVID vaccinations. I think our second month, then, we were dealing with the freeze that knocked out power for two weeks. So it was, there was a lot, and, and we overcame it. And so, I'm proud to have been a part of that. So, again, thank you all, and I'll see you around.
Yeah, if the council members will please come on down so we can take a group picture.
So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting. We'll have a short break, and at 10:00 a.m., we will start the ceremony, the swearing-in ceremony for the new council. Thank you all for being here.